You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status of the African-American Males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good afternoon. The Michigan City Commissions of Social Status of African-American Males meeting has been called to order. Commissioner Fly is not here, but once he comes here, we will acknowledge him. So can we stand for the pledge? We will have roll call. Commissioner Conley.
Present.
Commissioner Benny, present. Commissioner McCormick.
Present.
Commissioner Millsap.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Councilwoman Tillman.
Present.
Roll call has been called. Oh, Commissioner Hogan.
Present.
Okay. Roll call has been made. And we'd like to have a the reading.
Point of order.
Yes.
If I may make a motion to change the agenda so that we can vote on a president and vice president.
Motion is accepted. Oh, is there a second? I'm sorry.
I second it.
Alrighty. Okay, it has been moved and second, let us have a vote. Commissioner Conley. Commissioner Benny.
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick.
Nay.
Commissioner Williams. Yes. Commissioner Millsap.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman.
Aye.
The ayes have it, so we will vote, have a vote on our president and vice president. Are there any nominees?
I would like to make a I would like to nominate Kimberly Williams for president.
Second. It has been do we have, oh, we have to have a vote. There has been a motion for Kimberly Williams to be the president and second. We'll have a vote, commission. Oh, I'm sorry, any more nomination?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Fly.
Okay.
Second.
Any more nomination? Okay, it has been nominated Commissioner Kimberly as president, Commissioner Fly as president. We will have a vote. For Commissioner Kimberly. Commissioner Conley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny.
Nay, this time.
Commissioner McCormick.
Nay.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Tillman.
Aye.
Hey.
Yeah.
Oh, Commissioner Hogan.
Um, nay.
Okay. We have Commissioner Fly. Oh, we already have, we have.
I have it.
Okay. It has been voted and moved one, two, three, four, five to three.
Okay.
As Commissioner Kimberly as president of the Board of Michigan City Commissions on the Social Status of African-American Males.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion for vice president.
Accepted.
Vice president.
We don't know who you nominate.
Um, Ms. Benny.
Okay.
Second.
I would like to honorably decline.
Thank you. Then my, if there's no other nominations, I would also like to nominate Mr. Millsap.
I respectfully decline.
I would like to nominate Commissioner McCormick.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Conley.
I decline.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Kenneth Fly.
Okay, we have nominations of
It was the second.
I'll second.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have nominations of Commissioner McCormick and Commissioner Fly. We will take a vote. Commissioner Fly, for Commissioner Fly.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner. Um.
Benny.
Benny.
Nay.
Commissioner McCormick.
Nay.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Um, Councilman Tillman.
Aye.
And.
He said the president.
Commissioner, um, Hogan.
Nay.
And Commissioner Williams, aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment just for the record, um, I'm sure everyone was aware that Commissioner Fly made it known that he wanted to step into the presidency position. Um, he made no mention of the vice presidency, so even though if he wins the nomination and the vote, um, obviously it will have to be his acceptance. So we're not even sure if he even wants that nomination as he isn't here.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Fly has the votes, this will be tabled to his acceptance, whether he accept it.
What was the total? Five, three.
Yes.
Madam Secretary, will this be taping until the next?
The next meeting. Yes. Yes. Next order of business.
Mission statement.
Excuse me.
Reading of mission statement.
Madam President, also due to that, you are now president, then there is a seat open for nomination for secretary.
Okay. I will open the floor for nominations for secretary. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Millsap.
I respectfully decline due to my job responsibilities.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lee.
I'll second.
Is there any more nominations? I'd like to nominate Commissioner Conley.
I decline.
Okay. So Commissioner Lee has been do we still need a vote?
Yes.
Okay, it has been second moved and second that Commissioner Lee, we vote on her status as secretary. Commissioner Conley.
Yes.
Commissioner Benny.
Nay.
Commissioner McCormick.
Nay.
Commissioner Millsap.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Tillman.
Aye.
Commissioner Hogan.
Yes.
And my vote, yes.
Total.
Y'all gotta be counting too. Yeah, sixty-two. It has, the vote has, it has been moved sixty-two that Commissioner Lee is the secretary for the Michigan City Commissioners on the Social Status of African-American Males. Okay. We will move on. Yes.
Forgive me, Madam Chair. Can we also take care of some unfinished business, the appointment, the appointing authorities, which the Madam President from the City Council has been waiting on us to, to resolve and and at this point, I would like to move to, as one of the appointing authorities will be the La Porte County Council for them to be able to pick someone. Our last administration agreed to let anyone from the, from the county sit on our board, so with that being said, I think it'd be appropriate that the county will have a pick and we know that the county will never disappear. Um, they will always be here, they will always be able to take a selection and I think it's more than appropriate for one of the authorities and with that being said, I move that we make one of the appointing authorities, the Michigan, I mean, the La Porte County Council.
A second.
Before we get to that, is there any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So which authority would the council replace? Because according to the bylaws that we just approved in February, um, there's seven from the mayor and eight appointments from the county council, so which section?
I have a couple of comments too.
Oh.
For you guys, if you want.
Okay.
So if I may.
Which one is he recommending is replaced, Mr. McCormick, which one are you recommending?
We have two authorities that I believe that we've been having question, I think the majority, minority health group stepped out and I don't know the other group. I just think that it's appropriate, there was a motion and there is a second on the floor.
Yes, okay, but we have to have comments first before we, we can vote on that.
Yeah, so I have, I have a couple of comments. So, um, we did receive a letter from minority health partners, they need to do it in a different fashion and so.
Excuse me, point of order, if you could, please state your name, position.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Angie Nelson Dyke, uh, Michigan City County Council, one-twenty-six Lady Lane. So there are several appointments that have not, there's not just, just not city council appointments, but mayoral appointments that have not been filled either. And with that being said, the Michigan City Area Schools has acknowledged that they're going to replace their person, but we still have way too many legal, I think there are three legal appointments in our ordinance and so I, I agree with council, uh, with Commissioner McCormick that we should make a change and maybe change one of those to be reflective of the county council or something in the county, um, because there are, um, two seats that I believe that have, they're not on our council agenda because they're not our appointments. Um, but we have received word that there are going to be two, um, recommendations presented to the Michigan City Common Council for those seats, so there are some other seats in that ordinance that have not been filled as well and that is where we could possibly make the change. So those are just my comments.
Okay, before, before you go, go ahead.
I have a question. Uh, which vacancies, uh, is vacant by the mayors?
It would be the justice.
Criminal justice.
Yes.
That's the only one then, correct?
The minority health stepped out as well, so there, I believe there was two, I, I can't remember the other one, I know the Michigan City Schools about to fill theirs.
And the minority health, they're gonna fill theirs also.
And those are the two mayoral appointments, correct?
No, no, that's council.
Council, okay, but did she say the mayor has some vacancies?
If we can hear from the city attorney, that's.
You are the city attorney?
I am.
Okay.
Amber LaPage, sovereign city attorney. I know, I'm pretty sure the motion was to replace one of the entities with a county entity. Right now, the creation of the social status is by ordinance and the ordinance specifically sets up from what entity, uh, the respective appointments are coming from and I don't see anything in here that says that the the county is one of those. So what you're wanting to do, I think, requires a change in the, the ordinance.
That is, that's what I'm requesting, um, because our last, our last administration clearly said that we should not be, um, the council should not dictate to us and we should be able to, and we should be, we should be able to, um, move the way we want to move, because as, as the orders used to state, you must be a resident of Michigan City. And the last administration, the last administration, um, allowed anybody from the county to serve on this board. So it's only appropriate and I believe that they amended the bylaws to, to reflect that now in the immunity code and it's only appropriate to allow our county authority, such as the council, to make a selection.
Correct, so what this, what you guys could do is make a recommendation to the council for a legislative change, so I completely agree that you have that power to recommend a change in the ordinance, but that doesn't exist right now. So right now, what I'm seeing is, of course, the mayor appoints, um, three of his appointments are from the justice system, one is from the county labor coalitions, one's from a neighborhood group association, one from workforce development, one member just chosen by the mayor. And Mr. McCormick, you are correct, any of those can be county. Um, and then the council, of course, has their respective eight different entities that they can choose from that can be county representatives as well.
And if I just may add something, Madam President, before she sat down, um, we have been having a hard time finding people to fill these seats. This has, this has been an ongoing issue, not with just the last administration, administration before, um, and, and, um, we just, we just, people talk good game, but then when you, they, they won't come and sit on, sit on this board, but it's, you know, and it's hard to, um, to continue to see this and I think in my role and my position and and any one of us, we should make it better for the next group. And I think it'd be only appropriate and at this point, I would just say, point of order, there's a motion on the floor and it's been second, we need to have a count, we need to have a roll call.
Okay, but we need to make sure yours.
If I may make a comment, um, based off of what Attorney, um, LaPage has stated and Commissioner McCormick, it can be done based off of the motion that is, um, presented before us right now, we can vote and that will be the recommendation then to move forward to present it to the council.
Okay.
So that we're all collectively in the agreement, whether it passes or not, if this should be presented to the council to make a change to the ordinance.
Okay, but we do have people that have, the minority health has put someone in and we do have someone from the education.
That is correct, but so we're not negating that, but there are still others to where it could possibly be someone that is associated to the entity for the justice, criminal justice.
Okay, so we can vote on that to be recommended to the council as far, okay, already.
Point of order again, there's a motion and there was a second and following through the rules, we need to have a vote on it.
We're gonna have a vote, but we also have to make sure that we have comments on that. So it has been motioned that, um, county council, there's a recommendation to have someone from the county council?
From the county council should be able to make a selection with the understanding that we look for African-American males first, then males and then women if need be.
Did you have something?
I have a question. First of all, before we discuss, uh, get to the point of, uh, filling of vacancies, are there any vacancies is the question? And how many and who appoints for the record so everybody's on the same page? Mayor.
Just one second, um, then I'll have you, um, mayor.
The, the city council has two appointments, um, that we have to fill and we've received notification on two.
Okay.
So, and then there's some others that I think the mayor can answer.
Okay. So the city councils, that position, those positions are filled, um, mayor.
Madam President, Duane Perry, Mayor of Michigan City, for the information of the commission, there is one appointment that is open, the Minority Health Coalition and we have been preparing to offer that to Pastor Robert Johnson, who I believe is in the audience with us today.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, um, I think they said that somebody filed up, uh, saying that they're gonna fill this seat. Yeah, that's incorrect, the minority health partners is the council appointment. If you look at the ordinance, um, the mayor has, um.
I stand corrected.
Yes, has a couple of appointments that he has that have not been filled and I believe there are two that he might have that need to be filled.
That is correct.
So if, so I need clarity too, because I don't understand, so, um, so.
Just a second, yeah, we have to, we have to do things in order, okay.
So I said that we have two that are been on our agenda for six, six months. One is for the minority health partners, Ms. Albertine stepped down as a representative and now they're reappointing someone, um, from the minority health partners to fill that and the other one is Michigan City Area Schools, Wendell McCollum. He has someone that, um, the school board is, I guess, bringing up, um, for their appointment, so they have those two, but there are several, the mayor has seven appointments and I think of his seven, five have been filled.
That is correct and to my understanding, if I may, Madam President.
Yeah.
And that will go back to, um, the justice, the criminal justice that still needs to, to be appointed by the administrator, which is the mayor and that brings into question then um, that the current one that we currently have with Ms., um, Commissioner Lee, has that been conveyed whether or not she meets the requirements to, to meet the requirements to be on the commission? For the criminal justice.
Mayor Perry.
Yes, Council Lady Tillman, yes, she does meet the requirements. She submitted all of her certificates to me. I have looked at them, they are legitimate, she does meet the requirements.
Thank you for clarifying that. So then, then that will put us down to one.
Okay.
And do the mayor have someone for that one in mind or not to put you on the spot, but just so we can.
That's fine, thank you.
Get some clarification.
Administrator Yagelski follows that more closely than I do, but he informed me that we have one that is non-departmental related and that will be Pastor Robert Johnson if he accepts.
So if he accepts and we're full.
To my knowledge, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Pastor Robert Johnson is filling the minority health.
Correct.
One through the council, so then you still have one more.
And I will just add again, Mr. Mayor, um, and everyone in the audience, um, for some reason, a lot of people want to come sit on the board all of a sudden and I, um, and that's, and that's fine, but at this point, we need to make sure that we don't go backwards ever again. Uh, these seats have not been filled in years. We need to make sure that we put something in place, that we have an appointing authority that will never go away and I do not see the La Porte County Council ever disappearing on us and we should not be, I just, again, I just believe wholeheartedly this, um, we in violation right now, I just feel that there was a second, there was a motion and a second and we should have a vote on this if, and if the city attorney can chime in on that.
We would, we're gonna have a vote on that. Go ahead, because that is still on the, um, that motion does still stand, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, on that statement, I would accept the appointment for the minority health coalition.
And sir, you are?
I am Pastor Robert Johnson.
Okay, Madam President, I'm sorry, Miss Chair, Madam President, um, this has to be done at the city council, correct? Yeah, but it has to be done, the acceptance and, and welcome aboard, uh, let's get it done and move forward. There's a vote on the floor, I mean, a motion on the floor.
Okay, we still have the motion on the floor for a recommendation for the county council to have to be sit on this board. Let's, and it has been second, let's have a vote. Okay. It has, uh, the motion still stands from Commissioner McCormick, can we have a vote? It has been second. Um, Commissioner Moore. I'm not sure what the complete motion is, can I have a motion restated?
The motion, motion is to allow the La Porte County Council to be an appointing authority to appoint someone to this commission, since that we all voted, well, the majority of us voted to have representatives from the county to, to be here, to consent, to actually consent on our board. You no longer have to be a city resident, you can be a member of the council, I mean, you can live in the county and we're just making sure that someone from the county has authority and that's my motion to add La Porte County Council as an appointing authority.
Commissioner Moore, do you have something?
Nay.
Commissioner. Conley.
Yay.
Commissioner Benny.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick, aye. Commissioner Millsap. Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Tillman.
Aye.
We have, oh, and Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
Okay, oh, Commissioner Williams, aye. We have nine yays and one nay.
There's another, I have another motion I'd like to go and get it over with. Okay, possible.
Okay, well, before we go, we do have someone, um, it has been an application put in um, to the council for the education department. Sorry about that. Excuse me.
It hasn't gone to the school board yet.
Okay, alrighty. The school board has to make announcement, so that is not true yet, okay, um, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I have, I'm on the, we do that on new business, I, I like to just move that we accept the banner that was given to the social status on behalf of criminal justice as education, make that our official banner.
Okay, we'll do that on, excuse me, I, I thought we did that back right after, uh,
You brought it to.
The back to school, uh, event, right, the meeting after that, I thought we already accepted that.
And if I may, we, we, we had, we had confusions, we had a member join later on and clarity, so just for clarity purpose, can we just revote it so, so we can put this to rest?
Okay, that, if it's on the floor.
Okay, it's gonna be on the floor just a second, let's go through our, um, agenda and then we will put that in new business. The reading of our mission statement. Can we have that?
Think I have it available. Uh, if uh, the mission of the Indiana Commission on the Social Status of Black Males is to study the social conditions of the state's black male population, develop strategies to remedy or assist in remedying serious adversities and make recommendations to improve the educational, social, economic, employment and other circumstances for Hoosiers. The commission serves policymakers and public interest groups as well as the media. As well as the media, community organizations, and members of the general public.
Thank you. Do we have September, our minutes from last month? No, but you would have to answer that. I know, I'm gonna answer that. No. Uh, may we have our treasures, um, report?
Um, I submitted the treasures report for September, um. To every commissioner, should have a copy in your email, but for the record, our standing balance. Is six thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Want you to accept the treasures report.
It has been a motion to accept the treasure report and second. May we have a vote to accept it? Commissioner Moore.
Yay.
Commissioner Conley.
Yay.
Commissioner Benny.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Millsap, Commissioner Lee. Aye, Commissioner Tillman.
Aye.
Oh, and Commissioner Hogan.
Aye.
And me, aye. Commissioner Williams, aye.
Point of order, I, I got sidetracked or I got confused. Um, who's the secretary? I, I got sidetracked, I'm sorry.
Okay, we've kinda went all, kinda out of here. Our new business appointing authorities, we've already did that. Um, commissioners, um, conduct and suspension. We will kinda.
That brought me to the table. I, I brought that on the agenda. With the recent events that's been occurring on our board. Um, contributed to myself or whoever you wanna contribute to. Um, as I said before, I like to leave things in better condition than I left it. At this point, I think it's appropriate that we, the board, not the outsiders, not the, the city council or the mayor. We should have some authority on suspending board members that are not complying with the rules. I, 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 I think that is, um. This is something that should be taking place with us. We should be able to deal with us. My phone conversation with you, Ms. Williams, clearly. Um, made me feel comfortable with doing what I'm, what I'm about to do today. I just wanna make sure that we don't drag out bad behavior on and on and on. And, and, um, I hope that we can do something from a one, we cannot remove anyone. We're not, we don't have the port, the authority to remove. But we should have the authority to suspend for meetings, up to one, no more than six. So we can open that up for discussion, you know, make a motion.
Okay. Did you have something? Commiss- Commissioner Tillman? Did you have something? Oh, okay, I thought you, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Lee, I, I think that we should probably call an executive session. And we should have this conversation in private and to hash it out in private. These, if we are going to, um. Take a look at the things that Mr. McCormick is making a recommendation for, I think they need to be, you know, um, in an executive session.
I, I do agree. This is what I would like to do as the new, um, president. Let me make sure that I look. Point of order, if, um. If you can confer, um, Attorney LaPage, it does not meet the requirements to fall under, um, executive. Meeting for an executive session.
Well, perhaps can we call it a workshop?
It's, that still would be open to the public. If it's a special meeting, it will still be open to the public.
Okay.
Correct, I don't think it's gonna fall under an executive session. The statute laundry list. Yeah, the statute laundry list, the, uh, scenarios when something can be held in an executive session. What you wanna talk about on a general basis just needs to be held in a workshop.
But workshops are public.
It's public, it's the same as what we're doing now.
Yeah, I have a question for our legal counselor. Uh, under the ordinance, is there anything in there that this could fall under?
Yeah.
So, right now, what your, the ordinance says is that the appointing bodies are the removal bodies. Uh, they are in charge of any kind of removal of a, you cor- correct, based on the conduct of a commissioner.
Okay, so the appointing authority, for example, the mayor's appointment, they would have to.
Correct.
Discuss that.
And same with the council. So if there's an issue with the council, what I think this body could do is make a recommendation. To the appointing authority if there is, uh, conduct unbecoming of any commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Can I address something, Madam?
So what you're saying is, if there's conduct that the board feel is. Unfit, then we have to make that recommendation to the appointing.
Authority.
Authority first.
Which would be?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, Ms. LaPage, is, um, what I'm asking for is, um, you go to the appointing authority to have removal. What I'm saying here is, I'm allowing after due process, after hearing a majority vote. That we can suspend a person up to, from one meeting up to six meetings. And that's all I'm asking for. We're not asking for, if we want removal, we have to go to the appointing authority, which, which has been done. At two different instances. And, 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 and we're not, I'm not asking that. I'm, I'm taking you guys out of this. Because right now, um, if, 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 if Rodney's behavior is so egregious, outrageous. We need to take it upon ourselves. And I'm, it's even in the rules of order that we, we should have meetings. And we should be the ones seeing if somebody be, be put off, but right now, to save us time and not to get in conflict with our ordinances. The ordinance are the municipal, I'm just saying that we will have the authority. Madam President, after we hear it, after we hear both sides, or the sides who put up the complaint and the person's side that's defending itself, their selves. Then we just make a ruling on a majority vote. That's all I'm asking for. And this is something that should be put in place. Because it's too much stuff that's been going on, been going on. Thank you.
Attorney.
Madam President, your ordinance laundry list, powers and duties and responsibilities of the commission. Uh, I don't see that as being one of the powers and duties. Um, so if, if this. Board would like to, you could include that in a recommendation to the council, again, as a legislative change. But I think, just to help this commission move forward, uh, looking at the powers and duties and responsibilities of the commission. Um, if you stick with that, and if you wanna then amend anything, you should go in front of the council. Yeah, it's just so you know, I only have a few more minutes after being in union negotiations, so I'm not trying to purposely step out.
Okay.
All I'm asking for is, if we agree on this, it will go to council and they will iron the rest of it out. And, and, and I think this is appropriate. It's, it's a long time coming, it should be something that should take place. Because right now, the appointing authorities on one side, oh, the council let us down, they should've got rid of this person. Oh, the mayor should've got rid of that person. We need to have our own authority. Like, like the last, uh, administration said, and people agreed on the city council. We, this is our board and we need to do what's right by our board and for our, our members. Thank you.
And we just wanna make sure that what we do is going to stand and be done correctly. So if we want to do things like this, attorney, you're saying we have to make recommendations? To have, okay, so.
Appointing authority. Are we able?
Okay, let me just have the attorney again.
So again, if you are seeking any kind of removal. Then what you should do is make a recommendation to the appointing authority. What Mr. McCormick is asking is taking it a step further. Not removing, but suspending. And what I'm saying is, under your powers, duties, and regulations. It doesn't say that you have the ability to suspend. So if you would like that ability to suspend. That's what I said, similar to that, is that you would make a recommendation to the legislative body for an ordinance change. To include that as a new power for your commission.
Okay, Mr. Hogan.
Is this something that we're able to vote on even if? This is something that the majority of the members want. Before we start escalating it to recommendations to the city council, is it something that we're able to say? You know, take a vote, most of us want this specific power for the commission. That makes sense to you?
A- absolutely, that's what you'd be doing right now. And, and seeing if it's in the best interest of the commission to even make that recommendation.
Okay, so it's everybody understanding what, what, what's going on so far?
Yeah, I'm just on the floor. I, I move to, I move that we, um, I'm, I move that we adopt a suspension, um, discipline conduct. Policy to, and, um, with the recommendation sent to the city council. To iron out the rest of the, the difference, but giving us the authority to, after a due process hearing. Giving us authority to suspend up to no more than six meetings.
You have heard the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Let us have a vote. Commissioner Moore.
I abstain.
Commissioner Conley.
I abstain.
Commissioner Benny.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick, aye. Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Lee, nay. Nay, nay, okay. Commissioner Tillman.
Nay.
Commissioner Hogan.
Nay.
Commissioner Williams, aye. Four to three. Did y'all count? Okay, four, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Four to three. Four in favor, though, right?
We have four in favor, two abstain, and three nays. So. It has been moved that we will make this recommendation to the council.
And for the record, it's just a recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Millsap.
Old Business. The bylaws, Commissioner Tillman. Thank you, Madam President. Uh, a few months ago, um, I sent out to the prior. Um, Chair and Secretary, the bylaws that we as the commission approved. On February ninth of twenty twenty-two. And if I may just reiterate, as it was stated under old business. The commissions discussed the revisions of, to the bylaws. Commissioners McCormick motioned that the commission. Accept the proposed changes to the bylaws with special attention to the future use of the title Michigan City Commission. On the social status of African-American males in its entirety, and the motion was seconded by Commissioner Hogan. Roll call vote was conducted as follows, motion passed, vote eight to zero. So the only thing that needs to be done, or that I'm requesting. Is I have the actual bylaws here, and as a courtesy, I asked, um, attorney here, the council attorney. Harris to add all of the commissioners' names, and we just have to sign it. These bylaws are official and binding. It was just a courtesy to have the new commissions to sign it, and it also dates that it was done February ninth of twenty twenty-two. Okay.
Madam Chair. Um, Miss, Madam President, uh, or maybe Ms. Tillman, you can answer this. I remember the, um, Miss President coming here, saying that we need to get something passed, so we can get it on our bylaws and be, and then we're done. So I, I think that's where the confusion came in, on my behalf.
Yeah, the question, so what, what my issue was, is that we had several appointments that were lingering. And you guys both tonight to make an adjustment, right, you, today, to make an adjustment for the county council to be a part of it. Because we had lingering multiple seats that had been vacant. And my, my, um, thought was, there should be some type of. Amendment to the bylaws for a change so that we can get these seats filled. Uh, and that's what I've been talking about for the last, I don't know how many months. But, but the goal was, okay, if we got people that don't want the seats, well, let's make the change. Um, and, and move forward so that all the seats can be filled, because there's fifteen seats. And for a long time, we've only had twelve, eleven, or twelve people on there. So what I was requesting, not necessarily those bylaws, we passed those and those are done. But what it was is, is there gonna be any amendments addressing the vacancies that we've had? And if there's gonna be appointing authorities that don't wanna participate, we need to make those, you know, make those, you know, amendments. Now, I will say, I wholeheartedly was in support of having buckets so that you guys would be hand tied. When there is an appointment or someone's lingering and taking their time to fill it. Uh, but now we have positioned people that are stepping up to do it. But into the future, if there's gonna be an issue with filling any of these seats, you all, as the body, need to make a decision. Um, so you've come up with one already, the county council, right? But if there's gonna be any lingering issues that move forward, that's what you do. When things are happening and you're saying that you're not being affected. That's why you make changes in your bylaws, or you bring something to the council so that we could correct it. Or, um, enhance it is what I'll say. So that's kinda what's happened today, because we've had these positions that have been vacant. And so it wasn't necessarily about the bylaws we passed, it was more about, are you all gonna come up with? A recommendation to the council so that we can make sure you have your seats filled. If not. Why even have that many people on the board? I know there used to be twenty people on the board. Um, and, and Ms., Ms., uh, Fay Moore brought that to our attention, and there, there were twenty people on this board. So, you know, all those comments about creating and not creating or whatever, this board used to be a twenty-board commission. And so now we're at fifteen. And if we're gonna be at fifteen, it should be fifteen. If it's only gonna be eleven, it's twelve showing up consistently. Then change it again. I, I'm just saying that as you move along, you make recommendations based on what is happening. And, and what the need is. And so that's the reason why I brought that up.
Thank you for the clarity, Miss, Madam President.
Thank you. So I'll pass this down.
So we don't need no, no mo- no motion on the floor, nothing, we just need to sign it. So everybody needs to sign it.
So we just, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Um, so, so basically, we just need to, uh, as he said, we just need to sign it. Yes, Madam. Okay, but the titles on here, um, we'll probably have to send this back because there's been changes on here. I can, I can amend that part. Okay, okay.
And then we can sign it. Can we go to clerk's office and sign it?
I can leave it in the clerk's office, yes. So we'll send that back to. So Commissioner Tillman will take our bylaws and amend those to the new positions. And she will bring those back to us so that we can sign the bylaws. Okay, next, um, we wanna move on so we can, um, our subcommittees. Is there anything from the Educational Committee?
I will be speaking for Educational. Um, Mr. Fly is not here, and Wendell was our chair, so I'm going to just say. That after speaking to Mr. McCollum, um, a couple of days ago, they are going to nominate a new member. Um, at their next school board meeting, I just wanna let everyone know, uh. And, and that's one of the things that he's gonna, that's gonna be done, um. So that's all we have for education. As soon as that new member is announced, we will go right into a, a meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. From our Health. Committee, is there anything? No report. No report, okay. From our Employment Committee.
Uh, I was contacted by the, uh, newly elected president of the Michigan City Chapter of the Indiana Black Expo, Pat Harris. And she wants to partner with the commission to assist in us getting the employment prep workshop off the ground. Which I welcome her to do that.
Great.
And, uh, she has an outline and agreed to be the felicitator for the workshop. She wants to get with, uh, uh, Mr. Hogan and. and prepare the, uh, lesson plan to get it tuned up. So that's where we are. So, Mr. Hogan, can we, uh, get together offline and come up with a, a date so we can all sit at the table?
Commissioner Hogan?
Are you there? I'm sorry, I was, I was on mute, excuse me. Yes, we can. Okay, thank you. I will get in touch with you offline. That's it up. All right.
Question, Mr. Millsap?
Um, yes, sir.
Can we meet sooner than later?
Uh, I agree wholeheartedly.
Yes, can we do this? Uh, I will be, can we do it someday early next week if, if our schedule?
No problem. I can touch with Ms. Harris.
I'll do Mr. Kelly.
Please do.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful, great. Um, anything from the criminal justice?
Um, I also submitted, um, the criminal justice subcommittee, um, report for September. Um, each one of you should have had that email, basically. Um, it just outlines that we finally officially received the donation from Lporte County Council of four thousand dollars. Those funds went to the controller's office. Um, we'll be meeting, our subcommittee will be meeting to coordinate, um, a plan of action so that we can get going with our anticipated field trip for African-American youths to go to the Zizabel Black History Museum and Educational Center. Um, as far as our debate, um, we had to put that on hold. There were some underlying, um, issues that, um, we had to check into, so that will not be taking place. However, we ask, we encourage each and every one of you, and anyone that you know, family, friends, just the general public, to research the candidates who are running and to make sure that they vote. Election Day is Tuesday, November the eighth, and it's very important, it's very crucial to have the right people, um, in positions. And lastly, um, we've already shared our sentiments as far as Commissioner Hogan's stepping down. We have voted on, um, Commissioner, uh, Williams to be our new president. We welcome you. We know that you're going to provide us on a good pathway to leadership, and we welcome you. Um, another thing is, uh, our goal is to reach out to the new chief of police to come in and be a guest speaker, um, for us at some time in the future.
I'd like to add, as the head of the subcommittee, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, one of the reasons why we was unable to host a debate, because I seen some faces in here, look, um, if we are in five oh one three C, we cannot participate in politics directly or indirectly. And we was unsure of our status, and it's been hard with the, uh, the changing of the new chief and all that stuff going about. With, that, that was, it was just a lot of stuff moving, uh, wheels. We just did, we felt uncomfortable having it, so we just called it. Um, when it comes to the four thousand dollars that were received and to the controller's office and put into our donation fund, I want to thank several people, um, Mr. Fly, Mr. Cox, Ms. Benny, Mr. Kelly, um, those two, Ms. Benny and Ms. Kelly, showed up at the council meeting over in Lporte, and, and, uh, they did an awesome job. And also I want to thanks Chris Ugelzki. Um, we, we always didn't see eye to eye on some things, but here lately, our communication has, came a long way. And we are able to get a lot of things, I, and you also encouraged me, and, and I, I greatly appreciate that, um, wholeheartedly, and, um, and I just encourage every subcommittee, do your best. Don't down another subcommittee and go out and get funds. It's already in our bylaws. I wish that, uh, the attorney wasn't here, but we are encouraged to go out and, and receive those funds and make our subcommittees better. And when, when the subcommittees are strong, the rest of the group is going to be strong. There's no need to keep trying to harbor bad feelings about past events. Let's move on, let's get things done, and just thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve.
You're welcome. Wonderful.
Uh, yes, so.
For the social, social factors, subcommittee? Is that?
No, I was going to ask about the health committee, so I, I didn't have my notes in front of me, but when we're finished, can we circle back to the health? I, I will get a report.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. The health, health committee. Do we have anything from the social factors? Nothing.
I, I would like to say something. Are you the head of the social factors?
Yes, I was.
Yeah, I seen that, um, some people, um, actually dropped out. If you don't mind, I would like to join you. Uh, and I hope that we can get a couple more members to join, but I, you can definitely count me in, uh, on social factors, and if I can, say something about social factors, if you don't mind, real brief.
Okay.
We all know that NIFSCO has a rate increase. And we know that there's going to be a lot of our citizens who can't afford the rate increase, and they're going to go to alternative ways to heat their homes. We just hope that everybody will get smoke detectors, carbon, is it carbon dioxide?
Carbon dioxide.
And that's detectors. The, right now, the Michigan, Michigan City Fire Department has those for free, um, while supplies last. Maybe we can join and, and we can go get, I did speak with the police, I mean, the fire chief. He wanted to come here today, but I said I have to run, you guys first. Um, maybe we can join them and, and get them in here and talk about the dangers, because we know what's going to happen. They, they, you know, you have to keep your stove open, open flames, or space heaters, and it's sad, and our elderly are going to suffer a lot, so I just want to say that, everybody out there, it's going to be a, probably going to be a bad one, but be careful and be safe. Thank you.
You're welcome, and welcome. We have our, um, remarks. Um, Health Department, is there?
Yes, thank you. Um, so we did come work with the back-to-school rally, and at the back-to-school rally, the House Subcommittee, we served, we informed one hundred and seventy-five families and provided information on sports at the high school level. Fifty junior high families were told about sports options, as well as thirty elementary-age families, and were told about sports options, because, uh, July was National Sports, National Youth Sports Awareness Month. And so as a House Subcommittee, we wanted to let children know during that time, the options that were available, um, for the summer programs that were, uh, available for Planet Fitness, had a summer-long program that was for free for school-aged children. And we informed the families about the options that were still available to them, because the program went through August. And then, uh, we also had a putting green, and we informed, um, families about the options that are available in sports and sports that are underrepresented, um, throughout the country. Um, many scholarships are just going unused because kids are not knowing, um. And, and sports are not always what we look at as traditional sports, considering like football, basketball, things that we look at the top tier. But, you know, there were clubs that were for chess clubs and soccer clubs, and, and at the elementary school letter level, those were not called, um, teams, they were called sports clubs. And so we did, um, meet the needs of our community, and I thought the back-to-school rally was wonderful and amazing. And thank everyone for all the things that we did across the board, um, as a social status.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, that's the reason why I nominated Ms. Lee as, uh, the Health Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question for Ms. Lee. Uh, the conference, uh, is there an update on that, or no?
The conference, the conference for the social, for the statewide status of African-American males, which you're referring to, that conference was actually yesterday. And, and it's highly unfortunate that, uh, we didn't get an opportunity to, uh, participate, but next year's coming, and as we work together as a, uh, as commission, you know, there's other opportunities that are available, and I do look forward to, you know, uh, the opportunities to work together, so.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, um, the national, the state-level, uh, conference, that was also by Zoom, correct?
Nowadays, everything is, or probably were.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank all.
So, so clarification. So as the commission, we did not present the information to the community to be a part of it. So I do not know who in the, the community, um, was, who attended. I was not able to attend, even be a Zoom, so, for clarity.
Okay, we're going to move on because we're going past, um, like past one o'clock. Um, for the good of the order, commissioners, roundtable.
I have. I have a motion. You, can I bring the motion up now about the banner? Or you want to hold off?
Okay.
I want to get it over.
We'll do it once we get to you. Okay. Okay. No comment. Commissioner Conley?
No comment.
Commissioner Benny?
Um, I just want to say that early on, uh, being the first-time commissioner on this, uh, board, um, we have made some really good strides early on in the year, up until we had some, some hiccups. Um, when I first became a, became a member on this board, I made it clear that I, I don't like a lot of drama, a lot of mess. I like to do things decent and in order. Again, we had some hiccups, um, that kind of set me back to make me, made me feel like the things that I was striving to do, the best that I can do, were being challenged. I hope that that's not the direction that this board is going to go. Um, I, I hope that we can all be on one accord. I hope that we can all agree to disagree with things. Um, but I know that the subcommittee that I sat on, I gave my all, and, um, we were able to do some things. We have some things in the works. We were able to come, to collect some monies that's going to benefit this commission. Uh, Mr. McCormick was also the chair for the commission, the, the subcommittee that I'm on, so he didn't give himself credit. Um, but we'd like to also give him credit, because he did initiate a lot of these things. Uh, but, um, I'm still grateful to be on this board, because as an African-American woman, this board is African-American males. But I am an African-American woman, and I hope that I could really be an asset on this board.
Thank you. Commissioner, um, McCormick?
I'd like to move to accept the banner that was given to the social status on behalf of criminal justice and education. Make that, adopt that as our official banner.
Second.
It has been moved and second. Let us have a vote. Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Benny?
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick?
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Tillman?
Aye.
And my, oh, Commissioner Hogan?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
I'd like to make, I have two more things. I'd like to, I'd like to also say, um, to Tommy Kalabik, you, you have always been here with us. You have, um, you have came with more information and some of the issues in the black community than, than we have. And, and I'd just like to say, I just, I love you at the city council meetings as well. I, I think that it's been a long time coming. Um, I would like for us to, I move to make Tommy Kalabik, um, a honorary member of the social status, and if so, we put him in a seat today. Thank you.
Um, we're going to table that right now. But we do thank you for being here. You, you, you are, um, very, um.
Yes, our motion, to make him an honorary member. He's been trying like heck to get on his board, and it's been setback.
Madam President, according to order, you wouldn't have to, the acknowledgement of an honorary is, is great. But you can also, we were asked then, would you consider, um, being on one of the subcommittees?
Sure.
We definitely need you on the social factors. Okay.
I just want to say thank you, um, I seen where Mr. Fly was put on, under the last administration, and I thought we can do it now, um. Hopefully, the school board do their part, right? Okay. And then last, but not least, I just want to say something about leadership. Sometimes it seem like we lack leadership at times. And then at times, we seem like we have too much leadership. Um, after our phone conversation with me and you, Ms. Williams, uh, I say silence speaks volumes. There was a lot of people, including the mayor, who was here on the unfortunate events that occurred, not to rehash anything. He never spoke up. He never said a word. He just let it go unchallenged. Or let it just, let it, let it, let it just run wild. Madam President, uh, you have been, you've been here for most part, you missed some meetings, but you, for the most part, you've been here. You know, everybody temperament and everything. No one's, I'm never going to be perfect. And if you're looking for somebody that's perfect, I, count me out. I'm not going to be perfect. But when I do do a good job, or we doing a good job, no encouragement is coming in from, from anywhere. And I guess that's because a lack of leadership. But my phone conversation with you, you could have put your brothers, uh, of the cloth, you could have told them, you could have put their mind at ease, that Mr. McCormick is not causing any problems on our board. But instead, every, like I said, silence speaks volumes. And I, I just, I just, I, I'm just hurt, I'm just hurt to, to a degree where I know where my next step is going to be. I wish that if we ever get an opportunity to set the record straight, that I hope that, Madam President, you set the record straight for, for, for really what's been happening here. And, um, to all the pastors, the pastors that, that joining forces, please, you have a problem writing a document, I encourage you to come to my door. Or invite me to your church, the doors are open. And you can talk to me, and we can discuss that, um, one-on-one, because coming into these meetings, trying to belittle each other is not going to work no more. It, it's not going, it's not going to happen, so.
Okay.
With that being said, I just, with that being said, I'd just like to say thank you, and, um, Ms. Williams, I, I hope that you do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm always going to do the right thing, Commissioner McCormick. Okay, Commissioner Millsap?
Yes, I would like to thank everyone in attendance today for coming in and taking this time out of your busy schedule to support the commission. And we are a work in progress, so please bear with us. And we just want the best for the community. Also, the title of this commission is the Social Status of African-American Males. I guess this would be a call-out for African-American males to please come and stand up. As you can see, our board is comprised of African-American females, which we wholeheartedly support. However, they can't be expected to do everything. So I guess it comes to time when you have to man up. We look forward to you attending or jumping in. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Um, the twenty twenty-two general election, um, has a mobile voting unit. And I just want to make people aware, the early voting has currently started. And the twenty twenty-two general election mobile unit, mobile voting unit has a schedule, uh, that I sent out. Um, so actually today, um, October the nineteenth, from twelve thirty PM to three thirty PM, they're at Lakeland Estates in Michigan City. October the twentieth, they're at the Methodist Church in Rolling Prairie. At one o'clock, they're at Monroe Crossing Hudson. The twenty-first, they're at Carriage House Apartments in Lporte. From one to three thirty PM, Cambridge Square in Lporte. The twenty-fourth, nine AM to twelve noon, Maple City Square in Lporte. Twelve thirty to three thirty, County Acres Apartments in Lporte. October twenty-fifth, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, Prairie Park Westville. Twelve thirty to three thirty, Apartments in Kingsford Heights. October the twenty-sixth, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, Township Community Center in Fish Lake. October the twenty-seventh, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, Silver Birch in Michigan City. Twelve thirty to three thirty PM, Tall Timbers in Michigan City. October the twenty-eighth, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, Springfield Church in Lporte. One PM to three thirty PM, Heston Hills Conference Center in Lporte. October the twenty-ninth, twelve PM to three thirty PM, Historical Society Museum in Lporte. October thirty-first, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, Methodist Church in Rolling Prairie. One PM to three thirty PM, Monroe's Crossing Hudson. November the first, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, Carriage House in Lporte. One PM to three thirty PM, Cambridge Square in Lporte. November the second, twelve thirty PM to three thirty PM, Township Community Center Fish Lake. November the third, nine AM to two PM, the Senior Center in Michigan City. And November the fourth, nine AM to twelve thirty PM, at Garden States, at Garden Estates in Michigan City. Please remember to vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Tillman? Commissioner Hogan, do you have anything?
I just want to thank everybody for the, the patience and the understanding that they showed me during my time as president, and I want to congratulate you uh, on a new position. And if you would, could you perhaps give me a?
you, uh, on a new position. And if you would, could you perhaps give me a call whenever you get time?
Thank you so much. And I'd just like to say, I thank you all for the vote to be your president. I will work as hard as I can to be all that I can be, and I do want to say that this commission started off really good, and I think we're on a, a, a great pace to continue. Um, all subcommittees, you're doing excellent job. I appreciate it, and let's just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I call for a meeting to be adjourned?
Second.
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 Aye.
Aye. Anybody, have anybody seen Pastor Kira?